Good morning, sir.
That was what's happening.
Yeah, we have a few things today to discuss on the first for staff. The big one is going to be the master space plan, which Tanya Cole and Justin Graham will go over. And we thought we'd let you see today, so we got a screen and where you could actually see the pictures instead of trying to look at it on those little TVs. We're going to talk a little bit about Mike wants to talk about KAC legislative agenda schedule, and Kate wants to talk a little bit about NBC baseball tournament and the Riverfront Legacy Plan meeting that's scheduled for tomorrow. And I think we want to talk about a couple of transportation meetings that are happening next week as well. So with that, we'll let Tanya and Justin get started and give you the master space plan. Thank you.
Good morning, Tanya.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Justin Graham with Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye Architecture and myself are here this morning to give you an update on the master space plan. As you recall, Justin and I were here in March to give you an update on the adult detention facility project, as well as to give you a briefing on the county admin building history and background. And at that time, Commission directed staff to come back with the master space plan and block diagram. And so we're here today to give you that update. So I'd like to start out with this slide. This is really the genesis of our most recent space needs discussion. And it started in 2017 with a space need study with the public safety agencies, need for space in the county courthouse. And so I'll start with District Court. Currently existing county courthouse facility, their square footage is about 120,000 square feet. Their programming space need is 150,000 square feet. So their additional square footage need is 30,000 additional square foot. DA, probably the most critical square footage need they have. Existing courthouse facility, 20,000 square feet. Programming need is 35,000 square feet. And their additional square footage need is 15,000 square feet. With their new space that they'll gain on the second and third floor, when the sheriff's department vacates, second, third floor, they'll gain a little bit over 9,000 square feet. So their net additional square foot need is just under 6,000 square feet. And then the sheriff, when they vacate the courthouse, what remains is their judicial operations. And so their additional square foot need there is about 750 square feet. So total additional square foot need for these public safety agencies is 36,734 in the courthouse. So Justin has been working since March, floor by floor, of a review of the courthouse complex. And so courthouse complex includes the facilities of county courthouse, historic courthouse, and the Munger Building. And so he's going to discuss that in great detail. And then after the floor plan discussion, he's also going to talk phasing summary. And so the phasing summary is really an operational and temporary moves that'll accomplish the end goal of providing program space for those public safety agencies, as well as the county admin functions with the end goal again there being the county admin building. And so at this point, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Justin Graham.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and Manager, Staff. Pleasure to be with you today. As Tanya said, we've been working since about March on looking at every floor of the courthouse and the Munger Building and the historic courthouse, all with the idea of a new administration building in mind as part of this puzzle. We have a lot of slides to go through today, and I'll try to find the right pace for it because there's a lot of floors to look at. But if I go too fast and I need to slow down, just holler and let me know. We'll begin with the main courthouse building. And so this first slide is to show you all 11 floors of the, excuse, 12 floors with the basement of the main courthouse facility. Not going to study at this scale, we're not trying to study these plans in detail, but I wanted to just give you an overall impression of how this building is occupied. And color code wise, the yellow are current Sedgwick County administrative spaces. The blues are district court functions. There's a couple of shades of blue of court staff, district court staff, and then another shade there for courtrooms. And then the light blue or cyan color is the district attorney spaces. And the bright green that you see are sheriff administration spaces and investigation spaces that will be leaving this facility for the jail expansion. And then the white would be just basic common circulation stairs, lobbies, building service areas such as mechanical and so forth. So also, as we talk about the annex portion of the building, that would be basement, first and second floors of this finger of the plan that shoots off of the main courthouse below. So that's just a snapshot of how the building is occupied today, and we're going to break it down floor by floor as we move forward here. This would be the proposed use of the courthouse after the changes. And so the point of this is to show no more yellow, so no more administrative spaces within the courthouse. All blues, the district court functions, the cyan color being the district attorney, and then their sheriff judicial as well on the eighth floor. The pale shade that you see here are some pockets of vacant space or available space for other development that would remain in the courthouse. So we'll start at the basement floor here. So existing in the basement, we have the, I'm just going to work from lower end of the plan up. We have records management in this lower section. District Attorney has some storage down here. District Court in the blue has some conference spaces and storage space. And then we have the kitchen cafeteria area here in gray. Lot of mechanical space dedicated in the lower level here. And then at the far north end, we have adult probation in the blue here. So as proposed, the, this portion of the annex would be demolished, and so I've hatched that out, is no longer available. So that would really in effect go away at the basement level. And then what's proposed would be to replace the cafeteria area with PFA, PFS hearing rooms. One point I want to make is the walls that you see through these shades are not new wall layouts within these spaces. We're simply looking at block diagrams at this point. Those are existing walls, and really what we're focused on is just the amount of area consumed by various departments. So this would convert to PFA, PFS hearing. We would relocate some storage for the clerks down in this area. District Attorney would maintain storage. District Court would maintain storage, and these conference room spaces would remain. This area here, a former records management, we think is a good storage area for general use. One of the challenges with this space is that it's up about a half story from the rest of the basement. And so it doesn't sit, set up very well currently for public access to that area. There's a service lift to bring pallets of storage material to that area, but there's not a public elevator to access that floor. And as well, trying to expand this area to make better use of it adjacent is a challenge because of this change in floor level that occurs across here. So that's what the basement would look like at the completion of this project. Moving up to the first floor, existing, we have a mixture of, currently of administrative spaces, district court spaces, DA, and some other building amenities. At the south end, we have the treasurer's office currently. District Court has some accounting and pay stations in this area. We have adult pre-sentence investigations back here, and PFA, PFS intake here, and then some of the other administrative spaces, communications, facilities sprinkled in here. At the north end, we have the district attorney on the first floor. And up front, we've got credit union and market over here. So the proposed layout for the first floor would include new traffic court and pay stations in this south zone after the treasurer vacates. Would include relocating criminal clerks from the seventh floor down to the first floor in this area. PFA, PFS intake would remain as they are today. The jury assembly room remains as it is today. And then we have a few vacancies here with some of these smaller administrative functions and facilities and communications vacating. And the north end, of course, with the demolition of the annex, that would go away. So we move up to the second floor currently. Again, a mixture of both administrative and sheriff and DA spaces. The south end is where the county clerk is currently located. Adjacent to that, district attorney has some space here. Sheriff's investigations on the west side, which will relocate over to the jail addition, and then register of deeds on the north side, and then the DA filling in this remaining space on the second floor. At the conclusion of this project, the DA would occupy the entire second floor, and that portion of the annex would be demolished up here. Moving up to the third floor, again, we have a mixture of Sedgwick County administrative spaces in the yellow here with county counselor, manager, and B O C C, and then communications. And then on the west side, we have sheriff administration space, which is slated to move to the jail expansion. And district attorney has a small area on here currently. At the conclusion of this project, we would see district attorney occupying the entire Fourth floor is primarily district court space today. As you can see, we do have two court, three courtrooms in this area, a couple courtrooms over here, surrounded by supporting district court spaces. Not many changes on this floor in terms of different departments moving in or out, but what is proposed is to remodel these three courtrooms into more three equally sized spaces, which will better suit the docket for their use. We do have a little bit of open space that happens here with relocating the appeals judge and law clerk to another floor that we'll get to here shortly. Fifth floor today is primarily district court in the blues. We have a number of courtrooms, one, two, three, four, five, surrounded by supporting district court functions. DA has a little bit of space sprinkled in here. At the conclusion of this floor, we would see relocating the library and interns out of this area, traffic clerks and law clerks into other areas of the building. This is currently the traffic courtroom today, and so that would relocate to the first floor that we looked at a few moments ago. And the idea is to convert that courtroom into a small claims courtroom and infill these other spaces vacated by the district attorney with small claims clerks and other court staff. The sixth floor, again, all district court functions today. Not too much changing there, other than on the east side where we currently have marriage licenses, records, appeals clerks. We are proposing to integrate family law clerks into this portion of the plan. They do have some available space, and we can, by moving some storage out of that area down to the basement, we can capture more space for clerks in this area. The family law clerks would move from the seventh floor down to the sixth floor. And what this sets, helps set us up for on the seventh floor is to relocate adult probation from the basement to this floor. So currently, you have 4D, Kansas Department Children and Families located on this west side. East side is criminal family law, traffic clerks. At the conclusion of this floor, we would have adult probation located here and here, and then adult pre-sentence moving up from the first floor to this area here. And there's a desired adjacency between adult probation and adult pre-sentence investigations, so that would put them all on one floor. Another benefit to this is currently, all the staff for adult probation is located in the basement with no windows, so this would get them up to an upper floor where they would have some natural daylight. Eighth floor, mixture of administrative space and district court today with finance being here, sheriff judicial, and then court functions in the middle. At the conclusion of this project, we would have two new courtrooms on the east side with staff adjacent in place of the finance, and the rest of the floor would remain as is. Ninth and 10th floors are really, we're not proposing any changes to those. Those are all court functions today and would remain as they are. That's what those two floors look like. The 11th floor currently has a mixture of finance and district court functions. Finance would relocate to the admin building, and we would infill that area with the appeals judge, law clerk, library, and interns in that zone. So that wraps up the use of the main courthouse, and I'll move along to the other buildings, Munger and Historic Courthouse, but I'll pause if you have specific questions about this building first.
Any questions on the proposed changes to this building?
We'll keep trucking. The Munger Building next. One point I want to make is this is a much smaller building, and we've changed the scale here just to improve the visibility of this, the layout of this building. But keep in mind that this building is much smaller than the main courthouse, and so don't be misled by the scale of the images in front of you. We're just trying to make these images as large as we can for your benefit here. Currently, today houses IT, business services, enterprise resource planning on floors one, two, and three in the yellow. The basement includes a little area here for IT infrastructure. That's storage of hardware as it's returned, retired from your footprint throughout the district court, or not district court, but Sedgwick County footprint. That equipment retires here, and then IT infrastructure prepares that for discard. At the conclusion of this project, we're proposing that the Munger Building would be used by District Court. And this would be primarily for the 4D staff would relocate from seventh floor, various floors of the courthouse to this facility. So on the first floor, we have 4D staff located here, here, and here. And then we do have some relatively recently refreshed conference rooms that we'd like to maintain that could be used by any Sedgwick County staff. Those are located here and here with a break room located there on the first floor. Second floor would be all 4D staff, and then third floor would be, this portion would be infilled with current 4D staff. And then we have some available area remaining on the third floor. As we understand, depending on cases and legislation and loads, 4D staff has a potential to grow in the future. And so this would allow for some significant growth in that area. And also, placing them in this building by themselves gives them some security and privacy for the sensitivity of information that they deal with. That would be advantageous to them. The basement, failed to mention, would remain as this graveyard for the hardware. Basement otherwise is pretty much unusable, but it does have direct access off of this end, and that adjacency to the historic courthouse where IT infrastructure remains is preferred. Just to look floor by floor. So again, you can see conversion of IT, business services, enterprise resource planning to the 4D trustee staff throughout. Any questions about Munger?
Don't see any.
Okay. So let's take a look next at the historic courthouse. Again, just giving you an image of how the building is occupied today, a number of different First floor includes elections, a little bit of print shop mailroom in the orange. Second floor is print shop mailroom and IT infrastructure. Third floor includes administrative HR, and then the south half of that has the historic courtroom and some district court staff. Fourth floor is primarily storage and mechanical. There is a little mezzanine up here that's connected to the third floor, and that's currently occupied by HR. And then fifth floor is, I'm going to be able to read it at this scale, comm care and call center. And then sixth floor is call center and project search. At the completion of this project, we would envision some available space in the historic The pale pink color here would be potentially available space on the first floor if the elections department were to relocate elsewhere. There has been programming conducted, and we know there's some additional space needs for elections. The second floor IT infrastructure would remain and the print shop mailroom. And then the third floor, we would have a significant amount of available space with HR relocating off of that floor, as well as the 4D trustee staff, which is located in the historic. No changes proposed to the upper floors, fifth or sixth. And we'll get into a little closer view here, so you can see, again, this is, in the pink is all elections today. Print shop mailroom maintains this space through here. This is accessible for loading, and they receive large pallets of products, and so we'd like to maintain that area for their use. If elections did relocate, though, that would open up much of this floor for another tenant. Second floor, as I mentioned, IT infrastructure would basically remain in their current footprint over here, and print shop mailroom would remain as is in their current footprint in the orange. Third floor, currently HR would relocate to the new admin building. 4D trustee staff located over here would relocate into the Munger Building and have that desired adjacency with the remaining 4D court trustees. And then the historic courthouse, courtroom, excuse me, would remain as is. Again, there's that mezzanine space, which remained connected to the third floor and available. And then looking at the fifth and sixth floors, comm care, call center remaining as is. Likewise, with the sixth floor with call center and project search. So that rounds out the historic courthouse. Any questions about that facility?
Don't see any.
Okay. So the last image I'm going to show would be footprint for the new administration building. This is, can take on a number of different shapes, and really, that's its own phase of development here that we would move forward with if we have everybody on board with the use of the other spaces. But this aerial view, you can see the existing courthouse here. The annex portion is up here. As you can see, we're replacing that northern portion of the annex with the new admin building. We would envision it having a connecting link to the main courthouse, not necessarily just an open corridor for anybody, but it would be controlled access so that you would need to have a security card to maybe move between the buildings. Since the March when we presented, as we were looking at the basement of this facility a little closer, we determined that the mechanical really was a little further north than what we had, were presently aware, or were aware at that time. And so we've shifted this footprint of the admin building a little bit further north to preserve that critical mechanical space in the basement of the courthouse. The impact up here on Elm Street, as you can see, is we're encroaching on the sidewalk that is currently runs along Elm Street here. And so we would envision some narrowing of Elm Street with this addition. Could either remain as two-way traffic and eliminate parking on one side of the street, or reduce to one-way traffic, likely from, one way from east to west, and then still be able to maintain parking along the south side. This is the footprint of the expansion at the jail, which is currently happening, so that will fill out that corner there. So again, we will, we'll consider various layouts of this building as we move forward. But this shows us that to capture the square footage that we need for the admin building, that we feel like it can fit in this northern portion of the block with some reduction to Elm Street, and I think could work pretty successfully. So next, I'd like to just run through a phasing summary of how all this would come together. We can't move everybody at once, and so to make all of these changes through 12 floors of the main courthouse and three floors of Munger and three floors of historic courthouse will take some phasing. And so I think we're having, the summary passed out now, I'll let everybody get a copy of that before I move forward. Sure.
Since we're in the middle of this. Have we completely taken off the table looking at existing properties?
I don't know that things off the table.
Okay. 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 Thank you. Because I'm still interested in that. Just to look at existing properties that might work in downtown.
So what you see here is a list of phases. There's 10 phases in total, and I'm sure after everybody reviews, we could probably discuss, you know, options within this, but this was our first recommendation. And the way this chart sets up is that we list the phase, and then we have three columns on the right side. on the right side. We have existing square footage and then we have the square footage that that department would have at the completion of that phase of development. And then just for reference, we have the ultimate programmed square footage that was determined for that department on the far right. We also tried to establish some rough timelines with these phases so we can gain an understanding of roughly how long each phase might take. So phase one is underway. We didn't want to look past that because, because doing the addition to the jail for sheriff administrative spaces was a catalyst for setting all this up to happen. And so that's currently underway. It's scheduled to complete in February of 2020. The nine months that you see there is the duration of that from when it started. So completion of sheriff's administration investigation spaces over there, and they're growing from the 9,600 square feet to 11,000, a little over 11,000 square feet. Phase two includes then remodeling the vacated sheriff's investigations and admin spaces on second and third floors of the main courthouse for the district attorney. And we envision that taking about five months and completing in July of 2020. And the square footage you'll see will grow from just under 24,000 presently to about 33,500 at the completion of that phase. You'll note there that the program square footage is still another 4,000 square feet. And so we'll be able to accomplish that in a later phase of development. Phase number three is, includes vacating the courthouse, moving many of the administrative departments out, B O C C, manager, counselor, clerk and deeds relocating offsite as well as ITSS, Business Services Enterprise Resource Planning relocating from the Munger building. And potentially elections, that's discretionary, the timing of that, but potentially elections relocating in that timeframe as well. And so moving those administrative departments out of those facilities begins to open up space so that we can make a lot of the changes for the district courts and DA following that. So that would be a fairly quick move. Couple of months of relocating people. We don't know what those temporary spaces look like yet. We don't know how much remodeling might be necessary for those, hopefully minimal. But planning for that and construction remodeling of those spaces could happen, because those are offsite, could happen simultaneously with phase two, for instance, so that those offsite spaces were ready to go for the administrative departments to relocate to. So following phase three, phase four would be to permanently relocate the seventh floor and the 4D trustee staff off of the seventh floor and historic courthouse, third floors to the Munger building. And this phase we would envision taking about seven months would also include remodeling the remaining spaces of the second and third floors that were vacated by administrative spaces for the district attorney. So at the conclusion, conclusion of phase four, in April of 2021, we'd see the district attorney in their final resting or final home of about 40,000 square feet on second and third floors. And the trustee clerks would be in their final home as well. Phase five is another three months concluding in July of 2021. And that's, includes relocating the adult pre-sentence investigations from the, or to the seventh floor west from the first floor. So relatively short phase there. Phase six, another relatively short phase of a few months concluding in October of 2021 would include relocating the criminal clerks from seventh floor to the first floor, family law clerks from the seventh floor to the sixth floor, records, appeals, marriage licenses, some reconfiguration of their furniture to allow family law to move in and traffic clerks relocating to the 11th floor with the civil clerks temporarily. So what that does is then clear the seventh floor for adult probation in phase seven for about four months of construction to, to relocate them from the basement to the seventh floor. And at this point, then, then the annex has been vacated, all three floors, and that could be demolished for construction of the new administration building in phase eight. We would envision the construction of that four-story building of about 18 months between demolition and new construction. So that would take us into August of 2023. And then two phases to button up some other district court spaces following that. And phase nine relocating appeals judge, law clerk, librarian interns up to the 11th floor that was vacated by the finance. Traffic court would then be relocated to the first floor that was vacated by the treasurer's office. And additional courtrooms would be constructed on floor eight that was vacated by finance as well. That takes about five months into January of 2024. And then the final phase wrapping up in May of 2024 would include remodeling those three hearing rooms on the fourth floor for the district court. At this time, then we would propose to close the cafeteria in the lower level and relocate or create hearing rooms for PFA and PFS down there. And that'll help reduce some of the burden on the jury room today, which is stressed with a lot of different functions. District court training room, potential spaces would be available on the third floor if we wanted to take advantage of some training space over there. That could happen at that time and, and a little bit of remaining space on 11th floor that would transition for district court uses. So a pretty comprehensive project, as you can see, taking us to May of 2024. I know I've given you a lot to digest and you probably want to spend some more time with that phasing summary and, and understanding how all those pieces fall into place. But if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to try to entertain those.
Thank you. I know this impacts an awful lot of folks that are in this room today. I need the courts, DA, all of our electeds. Are there any questions from any of those folks? Commissioners?
How much space is the cafe that would be repurposed at some point? How much space is down there?
Presently, there's about 4,000 square feet, I believe. And I, I think I failed to mention that the administrative building originally, we didn't program a cafe space for that, but that is, we've heard that would be a, a good amenity for the building and closing that one in the basement here and, and having a new cafe on the, in the admin building would, would take care of that. Let me get back to the lower level here. Yeah, presently 4,150 square feet for that, that space in the basement.
So someone's going from the admin building to the main courthouse? If it's a staff person, they would have a pass to go from one, one building to the other? But if it's a public, they would have to go around and go through security?
Yes. Yeah. And another component to this is what, what does security look like in the admin building? And that has not totally been decided, hasn't been decided and probably needs some discussion about what level of security would, would be in place over there at the first floor entrance. That's additional detail that could be discussed as we continue to develop that footprint over there.
So once the sheriff moves to his new, new footprint over at the, over at the jail and the DA takes over some of that space here in this building, how many square feet is he short in this building at that point?
It was roughly 4,000 square feet. Go back to the phasing summary. We've got those. Yeah. So they're in phase two, they would gain that 9,600 square feet vacated by the sheriff and grow from roughly 24 to 33.5 and then with the ultimate goal of getting to 37, 8.
And the sheriff's needs are largely met at that, after phase one? That's pretty much takes care of the sheriff.
Yes. We do still have some work to do for the sheriff, the judicial department here in the main courthouse. They, they need a little more space and we need to work with district court to figure out how we can make that happen. The remaining judicial, sheriff's judicial area would, would be on eighth floor. And as proposed, that floor would be filled with courtroom spaces and supporting court functions. So we still need to address about 7, 750 square feet of space needs for the sheriff. We do have some space available in the building and, and so really there's needs there for some additional storage. Have a lot of space available in the basement that can take care of that. They don't currently have a, a break room and getting them some sort of a break room would be a nice addition for them. And then they have, they do have some future growth as the courts grow, so do the needs for the, the judicial functions of, of the sheriff's office. And so having workstations for those additional folks is, is another consideration.
And the, the extra courtroom space or courtroom functions in this building, what's the planned growth for judicial needs?
So I think we netted, we had, we had a, a traffic court on first floor, two courtrooms on eight. And I'm looking at Ellen here to help me with this.
Is this just two? The growth, two?
Two. Yeah.
So two courtrooms?
Yeah.
Primarily? Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions from the staff that's going to be impacted by all this?
I have a question. If this is the direction we go?
Five-ten data center would be, as currently proposed, it remains in place. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess I have one more, one other question. Is there, is there any unused space right now in the historic courthouse that's not being utilized?
Today, no.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate briefing. One of the things we directed the staff to do was go out and take a look at, at our space needs and what the future may bring. That's what they brought back to us today. The only area that we haven't finally come to a conclusion on is what we're going to do with the voting machines and the elections office. Right now, they can stay in the historical courthouse, but as Homeland Security comes up with the requirements for voting machines, we're going to have to make some decisions on what we're going to do with those. So that's kind of a thing that's open in the future. But the other thing that we probably need to start thinking about is are we going to start moving forward with this plan? And so I think we need to give the staff some direction on what we're going to do. That's what we're kind of looking for the, the commission now at this point. Is this a plan that, that the staff can, or that the commission can stand behind and direct the staff to start moving forward? As you see, these timelines start immediately and go on for the next four or five years.
So where would the temporary space be? Say we went with this plan, you know, how do we determine where the temporary space is going to be?
Commissioner, if I can jump in, what I might do and what I might suggest is, and this slide is really a recap of what we have in the recommended CIP for the county admin building, district court and DA, office expansion renovation, what those costs look like. What I might recommend we do is now that we understand from Justin what those, each of those floor plans look like as far as remodel for each floor, is maybe to tighten up these numbers a little bit more, come back to you maybe in 45, 60 days with a plan of, you know, tightening up that number, that 7.5 million now that we know, we can, we know exactly what that square footage number looks like. And also I think we know what these temporary moves might look like. We know that Epic Center, I think a year ago, had some room that we could temporarily lease. And so maybe come back to you with what a temporary move might look like based on that phasing summary, come back to you with a total number, which would be collective of the remodel cost, the temporary moves, as well as the county admin building to give you a, a total cost for all of these moves and remodel costs.
And I've also talked to the mayor several times. He's offered their boardroom temporarily for us to use. So we will still have a boardroom that's available, a very nice boardroom. So that pretty well taken care of too, if we want to move that direction.
So recalling from previous discussions, so it, it seemed like there was kind of an agreement that the elections office needs to be relocated. That's a big part of the old courthouse anyway, and that's more of a permanent move for them. Relocating, temporary, temporary stuff for all the admin is another, is just temporary is what it is. So could you not at least, regardless of what we do, we want elections and maybe there's others in there, I can't remember. But we've already moved forward on the sheriff renovation in the first deal. So wasn't it logical that, am I right, that elections, we, we agreed, they want their equipment and their offices somewhere? Can we just say go forward with that? And I guess go forward with kicking the tires on temporary space for everybody?
I'd love to just jump in if it's okay.
Sure.
We're absolutely excited about potentially moving. Cannot move in 2020. Can't, nothing can happen for us until after 2020. At this point, it's too late for us to move and conduct elections. We can't on the calendar. So just throwing that out there for decisions you have to make, you've got time for us because we can't move.
Okay. Well, that's all right. But I, I, I guess I'd like to know what, what departments are permanent that we know need to move and what, and then what is, and what's available for temporary, for all of us to be temporarily somewhere using the, using the place across the street for, for meetings? And Commissioner Rodano is saying that he's still exploring.
So the phased approach that Justin presented is a phased approach that allows for people to only have to move once. There's other options of, of the phasing process if you want to have somebody move twice. For example, the DA's office under one proposal could move temporarily to the eighth and the 11th floors where finance is at, and it could minimize how many people we have to phase out there. So there's options, but every option past what Justin is presenting would cause some entity to move twice. Not saying that that's not worth exploring, but that, that's just the way it sits today. If your point on the election office would be to move forward with that first so that then we could have temporary space, is that what, is that what you're driving at, that we'd have administrative?
Flexible.
Yeah. We can.
Was there another, was there another office that we said needed to be moved besides what we talked about?
Other than elections or admin here?
I can't remember.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think that's what I recalled too, was between their machines and all that stuff. So I don't know why we wouldn't. And even if we would look at something for the end of 2020, as Tabitha's saying, I don't know why we're not just moving forward on that no matter what happens.
Well, because have we said that for sure the election office will not be in the historic courthouse no matter what?
No, I don't think we've said that. I think, I, I think, I think Tabitha would, I don't want to put words in your mouth here, Tabitha, but I think she'd like an environment where she'd have her machines, she'd like to be in one facility versus.
Oh, no. I, I agree. We went through that a year and a half ago and we found a. We went through that a year and a half ago and we found a facility and you got the kibosh, so I'm aware, but.
But no, I think that, I think there is a scenario where she could remain in historic, but I think the preferred scenario is that she move out of historic. Historic does not, we can't modify historic, we can't put dock doors in, we can't do the kinds of things that she needs, probably even to secure it properly. So I think inevitably she's going to have to move out of historic.
And as far as looking at other buildings or other options, I don't know that anything's off the table yet. I think there's things, no matter what your policy decision on this, I think it's prudent to plan ahead. I think it is inevitable, I don't know when, but it is inevitable, it's just going to have to become a courthouse. Courts and the DA will consume this building, so we have to look at the next phase. But as far as what that looks like, I think Tanya raises a good point that we maybe take this to the next level and begin to drill down on these numbers, not, not locking us into this option, but just preparing the commission and administration for an ultimate move. And also, if the will is to, to put county elections as a, take it off the watch list and actually put it in a 2021, 2022 CIP year, we can do that too, whatever you guys, however you choose us to move forward.
I think elections we need to look at for the future, but I don't know that we know the details of what it's going to require to move them. I think she needs to be co-located with her machines somehow. We don't know what Homeland Security is going to tell us what the security has to be on those, so trying to find a facility or get a facility ready and then us then have to say we've got to do major remodel to it before we can even move into it, doesn't make any sense to me until we know what our requirements are for the elections office. So right now, I do believe that that's a priority, but I don't believe it's our number one priority because we don't know the details. You disagree, Tabitha?
I don't think Homeland Security is actually going to come down with a set of rules and tell us exactly what we need to do. They're saying we're part of the nation's critical infrastructure, but the thing that that is, you know, it's kind of a little bit of give and take because it's the federal government now telling states and locals how to run elections and that's the way our government is designed to work. So they are saying we're part of the nation's critical infrastructure and we need to be secure, and they're not coming down and saying we have to do X, Y, Z to be secure. And I'm not sure we're going to get them to do that. I don't know that we want them to do that. I mean, that's a whole discussion for a whole nother day, but I don't know that we're, I don't think we're going to get a checklist, honestly, at the current, in the current environment, that tells us exactly what they want us to do. I think we need to make common sense steps, which we've already taken some and done really great with the money you guys allocated this year, and making some great improvements where we are. But I don't think we're going to get, I don't think we're going to get, you have to have fences with dogs and, you know, armed guards around the voting machines, I don't think we're going to get to that point from Homeland Security. I think it's going to be common sense, we need to be securing things, chain of custody being, making sure it's secure the entire process through, that's my opinion at the moment of where we are with Homeland Security.
Question, so phase one is already underway. Phase two is obligated on the way, is that right?
Yes.
So really, we're going to phase three right now. We're discussing exactly what we're discussing, which is elections. September 2020, so if it's pushed out till after the November election, then move that back three months. So we're already doing one and two, so naturally we could progress to three.
Stop being reasonable.
Or we could delay it, then the speed of government will continue onward. But tell me the, so the BOCC managed those first two in phase three, that's kind of the decision, ITSS?
Yeah, I might just reiterate that relocate, because we were not planning on repurposing the first floor of the historic courthouse for any of the other administrative functions or district court functions. It's its own project. And so while that's listed in phase three, it really could go anywhere and, and nothing else in that phasing at this point hinges on elections moving.
Okay.
I have a question regarding, is it, is it important that the elections, we're talking about co-locating their equipment and their administration and their, and their function. And I, if we accept that, that's fine. Is it important where in the city or where in the county? Does it have to be in the core, does it have to be next to this building? Is there some flexibility in where this can be located?
Well, we can ask Tabitha, but in my opinion, it needs to be somewhere that's accessible to the public because we have early voting, so.
Well, I guess my, my point is that if that was to relocate, and again, I think we ought to be focused a little bit on, on what Homeland Security says and when they say it, but that opens up over a little over 8,000 square feet. And I know the DA is about 4,000 short right off the bat. I don't know, you talked about shifting things back and forth and around, and I think there's two, a few things that haven't been, obviously you kind of described this morning, but haven't really been stated as part of our problem statement. That is, we're doing remodeling of the courthouse and we're updating things and resizing some things and moving things around where it makes more sense perhaps. But our problem statement really is that the DA short some space. And our most urgent need is to find 4,000 square feet for the DA as close as possible to their current office space. And if the election office was to move, which probably fairly, would be fairly easy in terms of financing that and finding space, that opens up fourth, more than 4,000 square feet that the DA would have access to potentially at the courthouse across the street. I don't, I'm not saying that's the right answer, but I am saying if you focus on the problem statement, our problem statement is not necessarily update our, our current spaces just to make them nicer or remove, or move things around this building, that's not really the problem statement. We can do those things if it makes sense, but our real problem statement is to find space for the DA. That's the most urgent thing on our list. We're already, sheriff's already taken care of, DA is desperate for more space and courtroom space, which although is important, is still, is still a few years away. And so our urgency is if the election office did move, that does provide immediate relief to the DA potentially. And just throw that out there.
And I might just add to, and Commissioner Howe, you're on that line of thinking, but to address your comments, Commissioner Meitzner, the advantage to relocating elections sooner than later would potentially open up temporary space for whomever, whether it's DA, administrative.
That's what Jim's saying, right? Yeah, I agree, yeah. But it just seems like that one is an easier decision and a more logical decision to, for the next step.
Tabitha, do you want to talk about location?
I was just going to mention that state statute says that our office has to be centrally located in the county. That's, that's it. It's just to be centrally located. So I'm going to say we can't move to Derby or Valley Center, but somewhere central.
Technically speaking, you're not centrally located, you're, you're far east in the county geographically, right? Middle of the county actually is like, is west of Wichita.
But we're kind of more centrally located within the biggest populous area.
Okay.
Central to the population. Tabitha, we'll take you on District Three.
I just need to be located where people can get to me.
So I have two questions. If, does the temporary relocation, is that, how is that factored into this cost?
The, the temporarily moves are not factored into this cost whatsoever.
Okay.
The cost, the cost to move anyone off-site to lease is not factored into this cost.
I mean, I think that we probably need to have that.
Agree.
And then my second question would be, you know, what, what is our direction? What is our, what are, are we going to move forward or are we going to hold?
I think we need more details on what the cost is going to be and as Commissioner Meitzner said, probably elections office might be pivotal in this thing.
Okay, so we need to figure out what we're doing with elections and we need the cost of the temporary moves. What else do we need?
Make sure that we firm up these numbers that she's got up here.
Okay, so that's three. So firm up those, cost to move temporary and elections. Are we doing anything because it's come up? Are we going to do anything as far as looking at other buildings? I personally, my personal opinion is to keep everything central. I would say that I am a proponent of that, but I don't want you guys to do all this work. And then Michael, who is obviously not here at the present moment, brings up that he wants to look at another building somewhere. So I hope that he comes back so that we can all make a decision because this is a lot of work that you guys are putting in. And to do, to allocate staff time to this and then do all of this and then have to come back with a building that's three blocks away, I think is a waste of our time. So I think we should make a decision and figure out exactly what you guys should be spending your time on so that we can move forward with other things.
I agree with Mr. Cruz. All the time when we were having these discussions and we were looking at other buildings, my concern was the life cycle cost of a building. That was my number one concern. Buying an old used building and then having to renovate it and to get it so that it maybe fit our needs, but maybe not fit our needs, having to fix things that are broken on an old building doesn't make sense. In addition, if we go out and look for another building someplace, it's not going to meet any kind of needs for a campus. And we're going to forget that whole idea of trying to get a campus where that we're all located together. So I have spoken numerous times in objection to going out, finding an old building that we can possibly put together enough to make it into an admin building. So I'm in favor of, of building, a building next to the existing one. There's life cycle cost. When you start calculating life cycle cost, it makes more sense to put a new building together than it does to go and try and renovate an old building and then keep it up.
Hey, question for Lindsay. So is this whole bucket of costs, meaning temporary construction, moving expense, is that all can be, is that all one kind of capital project? Is it a potential part of it bondable or not or whatever?
Well, I'm going to speak from here unless Tony tells me I have to move to a microphone. But the $21 million is already included in CIP as a separate project. Actually, the commission had taken action last year to put $3 million of cash into this project. So it's already $3 million of cash. The district court, district office expansion renovation is also a separate project listed in the CIP and the elections office on that watch list. So those costs would be included, the temporary move costs would be included at this point. And so those would be, in Tanya's suggestion, that's 45 or 60 days to the capital's cost we could come back and start planning for that. But all of these items are already included in that long-term financial forecast that Tom and Lori and talked about.
Okay, that's helpful. Is, is Century Two available? We can move in there.
Might have to live around the right corner.
Lacy'd have her own office.
Yeah. As long as I can have access to the organ.
To the microphone.
If you guys like that. So, okay, so my question is how do we make a decision in this instance? I mean, is that something that we vote on to move forward with this? Is that something that we have to have on an agenda at a BOCC meeting? What's the protocol to move forward with this so that we're not coming back saying, okay, well, we don't like this, we're going to go down the street?
I think we need the other rest of the numbers.
Okay.
We need a few more details, but I think it's going to have to go on the board meeting and us take a vote on what direction we want to go.
So what's the timeframe for that, Tanya?
Well, if I can get back to you in about 45 to 60 days, I think we can tighten up these numbers. And I think Justin can also come back to you with a little bit more detail on that county admin, the new plan that he has here on this, this detail of his new admin building.
How, how many stories is that?
I think we talked about, we originally talked about a basement and four, and then we also talked about an additional floor that would be a vacant floor. So we were talking about basement and five levels, but that top level being vacant.
And that would satisfy all of this square foot stuff that we've been talking about? Excluding?
We were talking about the top floor being vacant so that we can build this thing for 50, 60, 70 years and allow for growth.
And that would, in that building would handle everything excluding Tabitha's operation moving to one central spot?
Correct.
But everybody else would be according to the plans, even in the old courthouse, your stuff would stay there? Wes, right?
Sounds like it.
Does that meet your needs?
It would be nice if we could take this opportunity to move the data center. The data center is in historic courthouse, very old electrical system. There's occasions where we have to power down the whole data center, which is not good for us because of the aging electrical grid in that building. So if there was an opportunity to move that data center for the future, it would be great to move that over to the basement of this building if there's space. It's just an opportunity and it makes sense to move it.
That's important as well as should, can you, can Westar look at upgrading that whole building to a more modern grid?
I think it's more of a facilities thing. Westar has their own issues with the power distribution units that are outside of Munger. The other thing that we're up against is we can't put a generator out there because of the historic presence of that building that will allow us to do that. So we're on a battery operated power grid switch. Anytime that, we don't use its power during storm or swirl or whatever, we're relying on some batteries and we'll switch it around, flip over to the plasma grid to get its power. And that's happened, that has to happen every year. Moving over here also gives us a generator, a generator like our 714.
Yeah, well, can you include that 60 days? Can you give us enough? That seems to make some sense, probably, probably costly, but.
We have estimates of the floor plans. We have all that ready.
And then basement would be better climate control for you and security and everything else? What's in the plans for our basement right now?
Plans in the basement right now is for the records management center to move over there.
Oh, is that big, does that take up most of that?
It's about 8,000.
Out of?
Out of the footprint of about 21,000 is first floor in that scenario. So there'd be plenty of space in the basement to expand that core data center. With the new floor plan that we, a year ago when we did all the study, we were on, we had.
Really?
We really reduced our.
Wow. You don't use a bunch of raids anymore?
Well, it's not sort of a race.
So is there a pipe that goes underneath the street connecting you over here and vice versa? I guess there's a pipe going under the street or somewhere so that you could continue to use that to go across.
Okay, interesting.
I would just say, I don't think there's urgency to this. I think the most urgent thing, of course, is the district attorney.
Yes.
But this is a pretty big decision. I mean, just, just on the numbers you've presented already, not counting the cost for moves for temporary space or the cost for interest on bonds, which I'm sure we'll have to have, but this is about a $29 million outlay as presented. And I guess my point is if we take some time to make this big decision, I think it's fine to circle back several times potentially and to do that. But one thing you haven't presented, but you have in the past, is I believe removing that part of the DA annex is about 34,000 square feet that we're losing by raising that two-story building plus the basement. And how many square feet are we adding with four floors and the basement? So what's our net square footage gain and how does this actually meet the needs of the problem statement? We've, we kind of had that data before, but I haven't seen it for a while. So I guess as we make this decision, that would be critical to have that data at our fingertips. I mean, again, this is a solution. I understand this is, it's fairly mature because you've presented a lot of great data today, but in terms of pulling a trigger on this plan, I guess I'd like to see details about, you know, the finances. What's the, what's our yearly cost going to be? How many years is this going to run out? Do we have money in the budget to handle that big expenditure? There's a lot of other things we have to look at besides, you know, just what we've seen, what we've seen today. And I appreciate this great presentation, it's been very well done and, but we're not, I don't think we're anywhere near close enough to be able to pull a trigger on a $30 million plus decision today.
Intentively wasn't make a decision today, but in 60 to 90 days, why they need to come back to us and give us more detail.
Well, I would ask that we would ask, look at the finances of this and we would also understand exactly what we're getting for the money. How many square feet are we losing and how many square feet are we gaining? How well does that meet the problem statement that we've already defined in terms of the DA, sheriff and courtroom space? You know, what are the other costs that we have not calculated yet in terms of temporary space? You know, these moves, how much, you know, is this a conservative estimate or is this, you know, do we anticipate we'll pull, we'll. Is this a conservative estimate or is this, you know, do we anticipate we may have overruns and we have to find other monies at some point in the future? Or is this... How realistic are these numbers? I think there's a lot of things we ought to be looking at as we make this decision. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? We've got several other things to cover today.
No, but one thing I want to ask, though, is like when we talk about building new buildings, are we considering, you know, not just building things out of the same old thing that we've always been building them out of? I mean, there's composite materials, there's all sorts of new technology that we can use that will save on energy costs in the future. The other thing I didn't see was the green space. So maybe I'm a little putting the cart before the horse, but I want to make sure that we remember that.
We did hear that conversation. We will remember that, Commissioner.
Hey, other questions on space? Very good, Mr. Manager, what do you have next?
Mike, you want to talk about Casey, legislative agenda?
Because each year, the association counties develop a legislative policy statement, which they adopt at their annual conference. This year...
This year, the annual conference is going to be at the Hyatt here in Wichita, November 12th through the 14th, a little later than it was last year. They had it in October. But anyway, as preparation for the legislative policy statement, the chairman got an email from him on July 18th, which didn't give us a whole lot of turnaround time. But they were hoping to get feedback from the various counties on legislative issues by... They wanted by August 6th. I talked to Jay Hall, their policy director, yesterday, and he said the 7th would be okay as well. And they are actually having their first legislative policy committee meeting a week from Friday in Topeka. So anyway, I contacted the manager's office and Tanya Cole, and we have a meeting this afternoon. And I know she sent out an email to the various departments to see what legislative issues departments might have. But we have to... If we have some legislative issues, we've got to turn this around pretty quick, quickly. They typically have a form. Now, there's been some turnover up there. They have a new executive director, Jay Hall, who's their general counsel and legislative policy director, is new, hasn't gone through this process from beginning to end. So they usually have a template that they send out, which has a number of things to fill out, considering your description of the issue, who you believe will support your issue or oppose your issue, what statewide application does this issue have, you know, what legislators or who have you contacted that might support your issue? You know, and we can fill that out, but we have about a week to put something together and get it up to them. And so I'm thinking maybe next staff meeting, bring... Tanya and I are meeting this afternoon, bring what issues we've gathered thus far, if there are any commissioner issues, discuss those next week. And then I can get something to the Kansas Association of Counties. And I was actually up there working with them last year. And I can tell you, if we want to get them to consider an issue, we probably need somebody at the August 9th meeting to advocate for it and from the very beginning. But I don't know why they're moving so quickly this year, even more than last year when the meeting's about two or three weeks later this year. But that's... That is the timeframe they have right now. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, I think that a number of our issues that we had on our legislative agenda last year that weren't successful, I don't know that there's any disagreement among the commission that those are not still critical. Working at behavioral health, I think is still something that's critical. We need to keep moving forward. I don't know if there's any disagreement on that. Regional mental health facility that we're looking at, we need to get calm care into the automatic budget cycle rather than it looking like it's an additional item. We need to take a look at how that we can abate problems that are in the county. Because all the different things that were on our agenda last year, with the exception of one that I will not say, kind of like Voldemort, you're not going to say it. It's too many press people typing articles, but...
Do you want savings time?
Whatever you want.
But I think everything pretty well. I don't know if there's any disagreement, but I think everything else that was... We did not succeed in last year are still critical issues to us. Transportation issues that we want to make sure that we move forward with.
I think the challenge, if I'm understanding Mike correctly here, is to determine what's a state level, what's a K A C level topic versus a regional topic. We have plenty of time. We're not planning... We've got to keep our regional topics moving and get our own legislative agenda together just like we do every year. But what's hitting us in the face a little bit is a state level, the K A C level topics of which, like abatement, for example, nuisance abatement, that should not be a K A C topic, I don't think, because we're not going to drag 104 other counties in with us on that. That's something specific to Cedric. However, regional mental health, hospital kind of thing, maybe is a state platform, calm care budget, maybe it's more regional. But I think we have to go through these topics and determine what needs to be presented at K A C versus what we need to hold on to and just put into our regional legislative packet that we come up with. Mike, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely, Tom. I think we want to focus on what, you know, what counties across the state will be interested in as a unified issue. And it brings up the nuisance abatement. We developed that as an issue involving urban counties last year, hoping to leave out the rural counties and the opposition that we'd be getting from the Kansas Livestock Association, the Farm Bureau, and some of these. And so we're going to be... Nothing is preventing us from championing all these issues and bringing this up later in the legislative policy statement and having our lobbyists work on those. But probably next week, focus more on some issues that might have some statewide relevance to all counties, hopefully.
And what... And I'm looking at Tanya now because she's the one that gathered the information from departments. Does Corrections have anything state level that needs to... In what you received, did you get anything that would be K A C level?
State level from Corrections, they talked about increased funding for Community Corrections Adult Residence Center. They talked about increased funding for state mandated Community Corrections Adult Intensive Supervision in Cedric County, so that more regional. And then Juvenile Detention Center. State Gaming Revenues Funds transferred to Juvenile Detention Facility Fund. Administrative and Authorized Uses transferred to Correctional Institution Building Fund. So they wanted to restore some previous allocation there. So those were the three things that I received from Corrections. Everything else seemed to be more regional in nature. So... And then, you know, what I heard from Tim is that really it's a little too soon. They're still working with their state associations to get more information. So it was a little too soon to get information for Casey at this time.
I don't know that we need to spend a ton of time on this next week, but maybe what we ought to be talking about this week as a staff is what's regional, what's statewide. And you guys can give it some thought, too. We come back together next Tuesday and let's lay out our three or four or five things that we... That's a state level issue that needs to go to Topeka a week from Friday, right?
Right.
Maybe we can talk about that and give that some thought, talk about it next. I've got that on the list of agenda items to add.
All right.
Certainly. I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to have worked on this study. And it's been very enjoyable. And we look to continue on and introduce our president of our firm, Shannon Bone, who Justin and I, you know, answered to. So thank you very much. We really appreciate our association with you.
Do you really tell him what to do?
Oh, yeah.
You're the first person I've known that could tell him what to do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Chairman, I think Kate wants to talk about N B C and Legacy.
Okay, so tonight is Cedric County Night and First Responder Night at the N B C Tournament at Wichita State's X Stadium. So the seven o'clock game, we will have Chairman Dennis throwing out the first pitch along with Colonel Brian White from the sheriff's office. We will also have a number of public safety vehicles out front as well, so a couple sheriff vehicles, hopefully an ambulance, and a number of fire trucks as well from Cedric County Fire District One. All public safety first responders will receive a free admission with their families. And then all county employees will receive a $2 admission with their families as well. Another really great thing about the N B C Tournament is all county employees, whether or not they can make it tonight or not, they can attend the N B C Tournament for $5 throughout the entire tournament and not have to pay the full price ticket because of our sponsorship. So that's the N B C Tournament tonight at X Stadium. And then tomorrow night, we have the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan, the first public engagement opportunity. So that's from 4:30 to 6:30 PM at the Wichita Boat House. And then there's a presentation scheduled about 5:15 for that. And we'll have members from the local coalition there to answer questions along with members from Populous. I believe R C L Co. and Olin might be there as well for that presentation and hoping to kick that off and have a really great, robust public conversation with that tomorrow night. So just wanted to remind you of those two very important events this week.
Kate, how many bounces do you think it's going to take the chairman to get the ball to home plate?
None.
None?
Do we have a pool?
Oh, yeah.
Let's start a pool.
They let him stand like 10 feet away.
Don't do like Longo.
Lindsey wanted me to remind you that throwing out first pitches does not work comp.
I did not say that. And I would like to go on the record about old people last night while he's digging his hole.
He did talk about old people looking at me last night.
He did?
He did.
That's all we had, sir.
No, you have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. The transportation meetings for next week. Actually, there's a couple planned. There's one out of county that I think all the commissioners have been notified of. And then there's also a transportation...
El Dorado or something?
Yeah. And I don't know if you want to talk about who's going to go to that. I've been invited to a local transportation meeting that Wichita State's putting on, but that seems to be just a staff level discussion. And I don't know where you're going to go because there's a lot of stuff going on with transportation that day. So are you planning to go to El Dorado?
Yes.
Okay.
You should. Well, first of all, Lisa wants to know what commissioners are going to go to El Dorado so we get it on the calendar. I think Commissioner Cruz is planning on going.
I put it on my calendar.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner, I plan on going. Commissioner Howell, are you going to El Dorado?
Don't mind him.
Okay. And we don't know about Commissioner Howell. Just make sure it's on our calendars. Also, the Riverface, the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan, make sure that's on the calendars. Are you going to the Riverfront Master?
It is on your calendar.
It is on all of our calendars, okay. Very good.
So we're all ready. We got that on open meetings.
Okay.
That's it. Now I think I'm finished.
I think you're done.
Not sidetracked with the old people.
Bye. I may be old people, but I still remember what you have folks do.
Two bounces. Two bounces.
All right. Anything from the staff? First of all, commissioners, anything else? Okay, staff? Any of the electeds? Everybody's good? Nothing else? All right. Good work.